Recording in progress.
Good evening. This is the Planning and zoning board meeting for October 24, 21st, 2025. I'm Kathy Hurt and Tom Clerk, and if we can all please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance.
This is the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, undivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm going to take roll call. When you speak into your mic, if you could please hit the button first and speak directly close to your mic when you do speak. Member Brown is absent. Member Elliott?
Present.
Member Kula Kotowski?
Present.
Member Ross is absent. Member Sutton?
Present.
We have a call. Our next item on the agenda is elections of Chair and Vice Chair. Do I have a nomination for Chair? You are able to nominate yourself.
Nominate. We can nominate Zach even though he's not here. To continue?
I believe so, yes.
Nominate Zach as Chair.
Do I have a second?
Our second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passes. Do I have a nomination for Vice Chair?
I have a nominee by you.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I will now ask the Vice Chair to take over this. I do have a something to add to. One moment.
Alright, so we'll open for a form. Is there anyone present who would like to speak? Going once. Alright, I will close the floor. Next on the agenda is approval of minutes. Are there any questions or comments on the minutes from November 19th of last year? It's been a while.
I have none.
Can I have a motion?
I move that we accept the minutes as written from the November 19th, 2024 Planning and zoning meeting.
Second?
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. New business. Alright, so first on the agenda is Riley Farm Phase Two, First Amendment to Development Agreement and Preliminary Subdivision Plan. Brad Cornelius with Waitrim will present this item.
Yes, sir. Thank you, sir. So thank you again. I'm Brad Cornelius with Waitrim, serving as your contracted town planner. And also sitting with me is Sarah Massison, also with me at Waitrim, she is our contracted town planner. I'll tell you, Sarah does most of the work. So the first case we have for you tonight is, as the Vice Chairman said, is Riley Farm Phase Two. So a little bit of the project background. Go ahead.
You go ahead. Yeah.
Fantastic. So you all may be aware, I'm sure you are, of Riley Farm. This project's been around for some time since 2022. So the project overall is made up of three parts. It's Riley Farm Phase One, which is 1A and 1B that you see there on the screen. And then we have Daniels Cove. And then the last piece here is Phase Two of the Riley Farm project. What you have before you tonight is only Phase Two. Phase 1A, B, and Daniels have already been fully approved by the town, so there's no action on that with you all for tonight. This is all on Phase Two. Why this is before you this evening is there was a development agreement already for Phase Two that was approved by the Town Commission in 2022 that provided for 111 single-family lots and certain lot arrangement. It also called for, or said, that there were architectural and design guidelines that were part of the development agreement. However, what we found out and determined was those never existed, that they were never actually done. They were never, they just were never done. And we did confirm that with the town clerk, who was at the time. And also, we did contact the previous property owner and their representative, and they also confirmed that it never occurred. So the reason why this is before you this evening is, one, they're reducing the number of lots from 111 to 87. They have a revised lot layout from all the streets that's been approved. And lastly, now to actually approve the design and architectural standards for this subdivision. So that's why this is before you this evening. Next, please.
Oh, you go ahead.
Oh, hang on a second. Alright. No, it doesn't want to work.
With the arrows? Does it work? I don't know. I could try it. Will it work with mine? Okay. What's this one? Okay. There we go.
So in terms of what the changes are that is in your packet and in the Development Agreement Amendment that you have before you this evening, again, as I briefly said, it's reducing the development from 111 to 87 lots with the new lot layout. On the right-hand side, that little image there, you can see that's what the new lot layout looks like. The adoption of the design and architectural guidelines for this project. And what's important for you all to know is what you see in your agenda packet for the design guidelines match exactly what you had already approved for Phase One. So basically, what's happening with this design standards for Phase Two is a continuation of the house designs and things that you've already approved for Phase One for this part of the project. Related to transportation, what's in there now is the developer is going to pay the town a payment of $85,000 for transportation improvements that then the town can utilize for road paving or other road improvements that the town needs needed using that $85,000. The developer will still be paying road impact fees, although it's part of their development with each of the building permits coming forward. In terms of tree protection mitigation, what's being required here is that they're going to have at least two trees per lot as they build out the homes. And if there's additional mitigation that they're not going to meet based on replanting, then they would pay a mitigation fee to the town. The other part of this tree mitigation where there's opportunity in Phase Two is there are some larger open space areas, park area, there's an area that's still being dedicated to the Open Nature Preserve. So there's opportunities throughout the subdivision for them to plant and place some trees, some trees that would be removed from their development. And lastly, it's related to the regional lift station in Forstman that was part of the original development agreement. Under this amended development agreement, the developer has agreed to pay the proportionate share, their share of that lift station in Forstman, which is $199,333. So the developer will be making that payment to the town, and the town can put towards that lift station construction and enforcing construction. Again, they still will be paying utility impact fees, water, wastewater utility impact fees will also be paid for this project. So those are the basic changes with this proposed amendment and in the development agreement. Next, please. So now we'll go quickly through the design standards. So again, as I said, this is very, this is the same as what you all had previously approved. The Town Commission had it approved on Phase One. The project is split up into these different lot type areas. So each of these lot types have their own standards and guidelines in terms of setbacks and those kinds of site issues for each lot. And what I think is good about doing this way, it makes it, you know, consistent with the character of the area and what fits best within the overall development scheme for it. So it's laid out that way. Next, please. And as you can see, I haven't spent much time on any of these. These are the different lot types. These are all in your agenda packet. So you can see, like, Lot E, so each of these lot types have the development standards there on the left-hand side. And then on the right-hand side, this gives you a typical lot layout, how the house and other structure may be oriented on that lot. Next, please. Here's Lot F. Again, you can see the same thing. The lot layouts, standards on the left-hand side, and where that lies within the subdivision. And what you can see, you can see here, there's different layouts based on different locations within the subdivision. Next, please. And then Lot G, these are the lots that are up on Lake Apokka. And again, standards on the left, and then the typical lot layout there for those lots. Lot Type Q. Next, please. And then Lot Type H, that's there along the western edge. Those are the standards and again, typical lot layouts for those lots. Next, please. In terms of the architecture, this may look all familiar. This is exactly what was presented to you before on Phase One. It'll be the colonial revival architecture type. Next, please. The Florida vernacular and the French farmhouse. Those are the three architectural types that are being posed and consistent with Phase One of Riley Farm. Next, please. And then there's also the standards for the outbuildings, whether it's garages or accessory structures. There is the same condition here that we had in Phase One, that if there are any accessory dwelling units, they can only be for a family. They can't actually have a kitchen within them. So there are limitations on that, which match what's in Phase One for Riley. Next, please. This, these designs and the layout have been reviewed by your Appearance Review Board. They're meeting on October 7. And your Appearance Review Board, you managed to recommend an approval of the design as presented, so they didn't open any objections to what you proposed on the design. Next, please. So the last part of your approval then is also the preliminary subdivision plan. And what, again, you have in your agenda, this is the preliminary subdivision plan that you have, that they've submitted. It meets all the requirements. It's in the development agreement. It has been reviewed by Town Public Works, by the Towns' Contracted Engineer, Alan Lang, the CPH, and also us. And we all have made a recommendation of approval of it. We didn't have any objections to what we're doing. Again, this may have been aware, they are still doing the dedication of that western part of the project to the Open Nature Preserve. That's part of it. And also on that northwest portion, there's that portion that includes the Pulte Stormwater Pond. It's part of this project, but it does show up here on the conceptual plan, or preliminary plan. Next, please. So what happens after you, after you all today make a recommendation, then this will go to the Town Commission for a first reading at their meeting next week on October 28. And then it'll come back to them for final reading and determination on November 10 for this project. Next, please. And again, as I said, our recommendation as your staff is we do find it consistent with the conference of plan and the development code, and we do recommend approval. So we're here to answer any questions you may have of us, and I know the applicant and their development team is here, if you have any questions, I'll know them as well.
Thank you. Any members have any questions or comments?
I do. My first question is that I see in the amendment here, there's transportation, tree mitigation, and wastewater infrastructure. But we've had a lot of discussion at the Town Commission meetings about potable water supply in the town. And I didn't see anything in here about potable water supply. You mentioned impact fees for that, but maybe you could provide some more information.
Absolutely. I'm wondering because that would be a special one for us as well. So there has been a recent update to information that the town has about your capacity on your potable water system as recent as of this past Friday. So the town still is in a position where there is a need for the utility system to expand, to handle all this development that's coming towards the town. However, you're not in quite of a dire situation today as we sit, particularly with these projects. So what CPAH, the Town's Contracted Engineer, who did the evaluation of the capacity, issued a memo on Friday to the town that said they reassessed the capacities, reassessed the impacts of these developments coming through, particularly Riley and your next one, 4th Street Village, and determined there is sufficient capacity within your water treatment plant to serve these projects without any expansion. The town is still in the process, and they are in the process, of updating what's called your consumption use permit, which is to allow additional withdrawals to feed your plant. But you don't have a limitation on your plant capacity today for these projects. But that doesn't mean a year from now, or we have four or five other projects that are in the pipeline that haven't gotten this far yet, that may be the time when that, we may need to hit that more specifically on water supply. But we have the confirmation from the Town's Engineers and from Town Public Works that specifically for this project, for Riley Farm Phase Two, that there's no concern with potable water capacity and ability to serve. And they would, like any development in the town, would have to do whatever improvements are required to connect to the system, whatever line extension may be required or anything to do that, serve their project. But they're not required to do anything over and above that at this time. And as you said, Mr. Kotowski, is that if they also pay the potable water impact fees, which then the town will be collecting, that they could then put forward to the expansion of a future tree payment? Thanks.
Okay. Alright, thank you.
Yeah, Bobby Johnson, the engineer, he actually did some of that analysis.
Yes, my name's Bobby Johnson with Jim and I Land Development. I'm the engineer for the project. And I also just want to kind of like expand a little bit. In the developers' agreement, there was also contemplated where it's like we have to provide a water pipe connection for our irrigation over to the future alternative water supply system that is right now in permitting. And so our system proposes to go underneath the nature preserve and connect to that. So all of our irrigation will be irrigated off of the alternative water supply and not potable water. So that will be also enhancing the capacity of the system that was envisioned.
Okay, so what is the timing for the alternative water to come online as opposed to when you start residents' residential construction in Phase Two?
From my discussions with Mike Parker, like right now, they're still in permitting, but he's a, from my discussions, it sounded like they're planning to get wrapped up towards the end of this year. I'm not sure at what time construction's starting, but right now there's current capacity in the system. And then when the alternative water supply does come online, they'll take all the irrigation needs of Riley Farm off of the potable system.
Okay, so you'll be then putting in the infrastructure throughout, throughout Phase Two?
Correct.
To accommodate that alternative water supply.
Correct. So we'll be there and ready for when, we'll be constructing the same time probably with the alternative water supply is being constructed. Because like right now, we're just going through our PD and PSP plan approvals. We still need to go through our construction plan approvals and then proceed into site construction. So our demands will probably kind of be, it might be matching up with the timing of the alternative water supply system comes online. But yes, we will have all the piping in the neighborhood to already be there in place for having like the reclaiming system in place.
Okay, so then what will your residents do? Suppose, suppose they get constructed before the sun delay with the alternative water supply? Will they connect to the town potable water for irrigation?
Typically, how we do that currently is we will jumper the reclaim lines off of the water mains. And that's how CPH did all their calculations, assuming that all the future going forward connections have irrigation components to it. But as soon as the alternative water supply comes online, then we'll back out the irrigation needs for Riley Farms.
Okay, okay, thanks. That's a good answer. I only have one other question. Is there a minimum residential house size in Phase Two? I don't, I saw maximum sizes being a percentage of a lot, 60% of the square feet of the lot.
There's not a minimum in the standards, but I think.
The minimum proposed on the PSD, we don't show a lot smaller than 80 foot wide. I think the old, the previously approved plans had down to 45 foot wide lots. We increased all of our lots to a minimum 80 foot wide.
But out of the house size, I don't think there's specific minimum house size, but the reality is because of the design standards, people that are coming in to build would have to meet those house design books. So somebody couldn't come in and do a small home. They would have to meet those design standards.
A 12-inch square foot house in the neighborhood would look pretty ugly.
Right. And without work, yes.
It wouldn't match the lot price.
Yeah, the lot, yes.
That too.
But I was just wondering if there should be some specification for that. Like in my Southern Oaks neighborhood, we've got a minimum, minimum structure size.
Yeah, like your Southern Oaks, what that is, that's not regulated by the town. That's actually regulated by the HOA and the private requirements.
We have them in the HOA documents. Yeah. And it depends on the lot size and all that. We have the minimum size, at least three thousand. Oh, three thousand. Oh. I'll introduce myself as well.
Yes, please.
For the record.
Address first.
Andrew Jacobs.
Wow.
1051 Station Side Drive. So I'm with Home Builders here and also with Riley Farm Development. So we have, in Phase One, we have the HOA controls, the minimum house sizes. It depends on the lot, so it's not, you know, blanket. So depending on the half acre, third acre lot, there'll be minimum lot sizes. I don't think we've established then for these, but there'll probably be 3,000 foot minimums on the smaller lots.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
Do we, do we have timing for when they think that they'll start actually building houses in this Phase Two?
As soon as possible.
Zach, two years from now or?
Well, it depends on, you know, Bobby, when they.
Steve.
So after we get, let's say if we get approvals today, plus Town Commission next month, we'd be going into final engineering approvals. Our plan is to submit once we have Town Commission's approval. And then I imagine we have a three to six month process through the town and through the state for the water management district. And then I imagine, Steve sounds pretty ready to go to start turning dirt. So I imagine by next summer, our plan is to be moving forwards with the site development. And then typically, another six months after that, until you start seeing, going vertical.
Thank you. Any other questions from the members? No? So this is public hearing. If there's anyone present who would like to speak on this item, who hasn't already spoken? Okay, I'll close the floor. No further comments from members? No. Can I have a motion?
I move that we accept Riley Farm's Phase Two Plan Development Amendment Number One as proposed.
And a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Alright, so next item is the 4th Street Village First Amendment to Development Agreement, Buildings Design and Preliminary Subdivision Plan. Brad Cornelius with Waitrim will present this item.
Yes, sir. As the Chair said, we are, this is the 4th Street Village BD Amendment, First Amendment to the Development Agreement and Preliminary Subdivision Plan. So this project, as you may all recall, was approved in last year, 2024.
Yeah, trying to hang on. There we go.
So just real quick, so this location is the southeast corner of Hoboken State Road 50. Jim and I may develop and open West by his girl, our accident owner, which is the, you can see that are here. So the same group that you saw. The property is about 21 acres. And again, the request, as you see there, that I already spoke about. Kathy, any?
Okay.
So again, a little bit on the project background. Here's the location of the property there. That's southeast corners, in front of those parcels with, you can see the Florida Turnpike there on the south side of it, and then by the State Road 50 to the north. Next, please. So like I said, this was approved last year on April 23rd by the Town Commission. And the plan, concept plan that the Town Commission approved at that time, which you all also reviewed and recommended approval on, shows the buildings in that type of arrangement with the kind of the horseshoes there towards State Road 50. The commercial is all on the north half of the property, north of that east west road you see there. That's all the commercial to the north. To the south, what was previously approved was where all the multifamily would go. And then on that southeast section, you can see that was where there was a community gatherings, entertainment space. That's what was previously approved for this project. And there's a development agreement in place already that would allow that project to move forward in that manner. Also, the entitlements that were approved here was 190 multifamily units and between, I think it was 40,000, or a minimum of 40,000 square feet of commercial and office, up to a maximum of 150,000 square feet of commercial and office. So that's what was previously approved by the Town Commission. Next, please. But the developer can deal with the revised plan. And that's, this is the revised project, which has generated in the, for this amendment to the plan development and amendment to the development agreement. What is important to understand here is in terms of the entitlements are not changing. Even though the building arrangement is different, they are still at 190 multifamily units and there's at 73,500 square feet of commercial office. So they're within what was already approved in terms of the total amount of development for this project. But as you can see, the layout of the buildings and even the size of the buildings are different than what was originally approved. So going from the northwest corner, sort of up there, what you see in that corner, and there's more details as we go through this, is where now the entertainment, public gathering space would be, could be up there at that north, yeah, northwest corner of the property. Then as you move across 50, you still kind of have that horseshoe arrangement there, that first group of commercial buildings. But then as you get to the east side of the property, the buildings are pushed up towards State Road 50. So that reorientation. Also, as you see in the staff report, one of the things that gets approved, if this does get approved under this request, the building widths of buildings, basically the three horizontal buildings that you see there, the two at the front on 50, and then the one that runs parallel to 50 to the west, those are larger in terms of their width than what the standard is required under your code. But again, because this is a planned development, it does give the, the app, make the ability and use the ability to approve an alternative building size. an alternative building size as, as long as it does make sense and it works for the project. Um, so that's what's happening there at the front. On the southern half of the property, where before there were several buildings shown for potential multifamily, now that's been, um, integrated into one larger building, um, for the multifamily. Um, again, it's back on the south side next to the Florida Turnpike. One of the, one of the requests for this building, again, it is, um, deeper than what's allowed under your code. And this square footage in terms of the footprint is also larger, but again, they can request that if it can be approved by the town under the PD. Um, then what happens on the southeast portion of the site, where the entertainment complex, public gathering place used to be, that's now stormwater retention and, and sweatland and that, so that's everything that's served in that area. So that's, that's the proposed project. Uh, the other big change, big change is that east-west road, when this was approved back in twenty twenty-four, the idea was at that time was that would be turned over to the town as a future east-west frontage road or, or reverse frontage road off of fifty, and that would become a town public road. However, after this was approved, Orange County decided to buy the property to the east under their environmental lands program. So that property to the east is no longer developed, so that road would go nowhere if it tried to extend. So what's being proposed now is that road would maintain private and it would be only developed, only maintained by the developer. It would not be dedicated to the town in the future, um, as part of this project. Next, please. Actually, I don't need to go through the site, I just said all those things. So those are the summary of all, as I said. Next, please. So what they're also requesting is approval of building designs. They did not ask for this last year, but they are requesting that this year. So this is just an overall view of the project, looking from the north, that'd be the northwest into the project at the corner of fifty and Fourth Street and Tub. Next, please. So what they did is they gave us renderings and, and of the buildings for each of the building. You can see the key sheet there at the bottom right of the screen shows you what building that is. So this is Building A, gives you a look of the proposed design of that building. Next, please. This is now, um, this is also Building A, just some more renderings of, of those buildings. This now is, uh, next building B, and then you can see what those look like. Again, more renderings of Building B. This is now Building C. This is one of the ones that fronts up on the State Road fifty. Next, please. And you can see the, the renderings of, of that building. And then we move to D, which is the other building that fronts up on the fifty. And again, you can see the renderings there. And next, please. And the drawings there, a full look at that building. And now, uh, and this is the, uh, building, I think it's E. Um, you can see where it's showing the key sheet of what that would look like. And then the pictures of, of that, of that building. Now, this is the multifamily structure that's on the south side of the property. Um, it is four stories, which is consistent with what was approved previously under the PD. The previous PD also had four-story, uh, multifamily buildings. Um, so it is consistent with that. Next, please. Again, you can see the, the design of those buildings. That's just one building. And next, please. And this is, uh, the renderings of what a look at that entertainment, public gathering area there at the northwest corner of the property. Next, please. And more drawings of what that would look like. Next, please. And that's all more of that there at that, at that corner thing of the project. Next, please. So again, the ARB did review these designs at their October seventh meeting. They did recommend approval of these designs, but they didn't have a condition with their approval. Uh, and what the condition was, they requested that the developer provide some more architectural detailing on the rear of those two buildings that would front up to State Road fifty. Cause those two buildings, it's actually the back of those buildings that front State Road fifty, which the front is internally faced, um, to the project. So that was the only comment that the ARB had, was just requesting some additional architectural detailing on those buildings. Next, please. So in terms of the preliminary subdivision plan, um, again, what, you know, they, they reoriented the, the buildings. Um, so they're, but they're still maintaining that commercial zone to the north on fifty with the residential to the back. So that does maintain that original group distribution of the uses. Um, again, as I said, the roads are internal, will be internal and will be maintained by the developer, not turned over to the town. And in terms of tree mitigation, um, the development agreement, it does say that they have to provide one thousand two hundred and twenty-four BBH inches of tree replacement or paying a mitigation fee, um, for trees that they don't replace. And so that's a requirement of this development agreement. Uh, and getting to the potable water, the requirement of this project is that all the irrigation will come from private wells, but they will not be connected with the town's potable water system. It'll be irrigated by, by wells that will be provided by the developer. What I want to address now, cause this is the best time to do it, is as you saw when you sat down this evening, there was a revised development agreement, I don't know if I've heard that name or I don't know. Uh, this is the revised development agreement from what you have in your agenda packet. Um, and I can go over it with you very briefly. Um, that was submitted to us actually, um, this morning. Um, and fortunately, we were able to go through a review of it. Um, this has been reviewed by ourselves. Um, we also reviewed by the town public works director and also by the town attorney, and we all have no objection. And we do recommend approval of this revised development agreement. But let me, the, the changes are pretty straightforward. So in Section Four of the development agreement, basically just removes the dedication of the east-west roadway. And this, like I said, it's going to be privately maintained, so really no, no issue with that at all. Um, Section Five, it removes reference that, um, they would be filled for solid waste. Well, that's been removed, they're generally providing the own solid waste services. The town does not provide them solid waste services. So that's been corrected.
Hang on, cause we, we don't have those papers here in the package.
We're missing one.
Oh. Yeah, they were, they were double sided.
So this is the other. It's the, each other saying, just, just double sided.
Double sided film missing.
No, it's the same, it's the same page, it's just printed double sided this time. Yeah, the major's just two, three, four, or five. And then, um, I don't know if there's any change on that.
And the chair, let me also go through them and just explain what they are and also see that when they come back. Um, so like I said, in Section Five, um, basically we're just confirming about that where the owner developer has obligations for costs or improvements related to provision of utility services that then within the development agreement, it gets into the word of detail of that. So in five A, basically it's just cleaning that up a little bit, removing the word construction. It still includes the word extension. So what that part is doing is just saying that they are responsible to ensure that they provide the extensions of the town's potable water and wastewater system to their project, for their project. It's their responsibility to make that connection to their project. Um, in five B, uh, what we, what was clarified in there is that we simplified it, but also we clarified that if they provide additional capacity within the global water system or within the wastewater system beyond what they need for their project. They're responsible for their project. If they do provide additional capacity, oversize a pipe, something like that, then the developer would be entitled to impact fee credits because they're doing more than what's required for them to be their project. But what we, we clarified to is that those impact fee credits that they could be, could obtain would not exceed the amount that their project would generate, would be a tap on that. And also to clarify, we can't give impact fees to City of Claremont wastewater impact fees. I don't know if you're aware, but in the town, we also assess City of Claremont wastewater impact fees because they do the treatment of the wastewater. So we can't give credits to that, um, to that part of it. Um, the next part is probably the biggest change in five C. And what this part is doing, and this gets to our discussion we had earlier about their discapacity in the system now, based on the, you know, data analysis, is that if the developer wants what's called reserve capacity within the town's utility system, potable water utility system, meaning they lock up that amount of available capacity, it's held for them. And we can't assign that as a town to any other development that may come in after them, even though the development may lag after them. So they, they, they lock into that capacity. So in order for them to do that though, what they have to do is pay the town twenty percent of the potable water impact fees that would be due for this project. And there's a date certainly for that to occur, which is February ninth, twenty twenty-six. And so if they do that, if they pay the twenty percent of potable water impact fees by February ninth, twenty twenty-six, that then locks up their, their impact, their, their needed capacity within the town's system. And, and that's a very common thing to do. That's not unusual thing that we have in here for that to occur. Um, now what it also says though, if the developer does not decide to do that, then at the time they come through their final engineering plan, if there are other improvements that need to occur to the system, then they would definitely be responsible again for their proportion share of that, just for what, responsible to be thirty. And then again, anything over that, they would be eligible for impact fee credits and not to exceed what they would generate and not related to the City of Claremont. And those are the main changes that are there. What I will say about this, the, the concept of all this is in what you have before you. That was in your agenda packet, but this, the way it's now presented, um, as far as staff is concerned, we all believe it's clearer and better directed for this development. Um, it's also important to, to know things that aren't being changed within this development agreement, as in their current development agreement still stay in effect. But I will say these are the core of the part of that development agreement that's there. So we do believe that with these changes, and this development agreement that I had before this evening that just was presented to you, um, it provides a protection to the town that we know the developer will be paying their fair share and of what they need to do to make their project work and to get details of that. The developer's protected. They're not responsible to pay more than what their fair share is unless they get properly reimbursed through impact fee credits. So I, I think this is a, is a positive for both parties. Um, a big part of this, and Mr. Zazias comes up to your point before, but Bobby said earlier, we weren't able to get to this, by this obstruction today, until we got this information this past Friday from CPH that relooked at the capacity that was available, that said there is capacity. And I think the biggest change that really made that work, and Bobby can correct me if I'm wrong here, is that like this project, all the commercial projects, like Oakland Exchange is under construction right now, they're all required to get their, their irrigation water off of wells and not connect to the potable system. So that's been the, the standard condition that public works have been putting in all development, that commercial development in particular, that has been coming through in the last two, three years, that they're not able to connect to the town's potable water for irrigation. So like I said, so Oakland Exchange is that way, um, the Harvest District down on fifty, that's not started construction yet. Their, their approval also says the same thing. And anything I think you see going forward, any of these commercial projects out there on fifty, all have that same requirement for it. So next, please. So primarily some of the plan, that's just a plan I already showed you. Again, they're just asking for that approval. And what this does mean is if this does get approved, then as Bobby said, after this is approved by the town commission, they can then come in with their final engineering plans to get things permitted for project moving. Again, the next steps is this will go to the town commission on October twenty-eighth, and again, for a final decision on November tenth. And finally, again, as your staff, we do recommend approval of this amendment. Uh, we have reviewed it. We do find it consistent with your conference of plan and your land development code. Again, I'm here to try to answer any questions. Again, the development team's here as well, um, to answer any questions.
Thank you. Uh, any members have any questions or comments?
I do. Sorry.
Okay.
So, uh, it's really hard on, on this particular sketch here to, it's so small, I can't read it. How many, uh, how many entrances into this project are there? Do, do I see one on fifty and one off of Fourth Street? Or is it only off of Fourth Street that there's an entrance into this complex?
Yeah, I'll let the engineer explain.
So this project has, uh, two entrances. Uh, the full, like we call it a full access is off of Fourth Street. Cause like Fourth Street right there has, is a signalized intersection. So it's like you can come down Fourth Street and come into the project. East-west into the project, yes, yeah. Or you can come in south down Fourth Street and come east into the project, correct. And then there's also a secondary, it's a right in, right out off of fifty, right there in the center of the project. Where it's like you can, as you're driving east on fifty, you can turn right into the project or you can leave the project and turn right and head east. But the, the primary access would be at the, the widened fourth intersection. And so we do have plans to, like, right now, um, Fourth Street is substandard, it's not the full width. So we have to widen, uh, Fourth Street up there to the existing fifty pavement to the full section.
Okay, and so that's still gonna, that's gonna be how many lanes wide?
Uh, I believe it's, yeah, two, two lanes wide.
Okay, so, so suppose I'm coming out of this complex and I turn north on Fourth Street. I'm gonna have one lane to turn east on fifty, I'm gonna have one lane to turn west on fifty. I'm not gonna have any lane to go north on Tub Street. I mean, and I, I, I just looked at this and I looked at the number of parking spaces here. And I just see gobs of traffic jam in the morning and evenings of people trying to get in and out. And it just, it doesn't.
Yeah, and I looked at the event center and.
At the event.
That would be one of my comments in the adjacency of parking.
Yeah, I mean, the event center, you look at, um, you look at the view over in Claremont, similar kind of concept to this. And like parking is, is a jam. There's a traffic jam up there. So I have, I have some concerns about entry and exit into the complex. Especially since you can only, uh, it's only right turn in, right turn out onto fifty without any way to get to the other direction. any way to get to the other direction. You're, you're forcing everybody out of Fourth Street if they want to go west. So.
I, I totally understand.
I mean, have, have, can, can you just talk to that some more? Were, were the traffic studies done on this?
Yes.
Can you, can you talk about those?
So there was a, uh, traffic study done. Uh, there was no recommendation of exit more lanes than the, than the one lane for the three access points that you're kind of, or three directions that you're talking about. We could, uh, uh, if it's fine with the staff, we could ask our traffic consultant to, uh, review that at, uh, final engineering. Uh, but it's like that will be, we can't, if it's not warranted, we can't put an additional like turn lane, but we could, uh, look into that during final engineering to see if it is warranted to have an additional turn lane at that intersection.
Okay. What will there be a turn lane on fifty to turn into and out of, uh, this project?
A turn lane on fifty? No, there will not be an additional like T cell lane.
So there's gonna be that backup on fifty is people slow down to turn in to the project on fifty when you got everybody else speeding along at fifty-five miles an hour.
Yeah, so that. So I didn't mean to interrupt you. I'm sorry.
All right. Yeah, so, uh, that's, that's another serious consideration for me.
Now, the, the State Road fifty is a DOT road and, uh, they don't, um, right now like fifty is fully widened and there is not a turn lane warranted to turn into the project per the, per the traffic study. Yeah, we, we can't.
I know. I know. The only thing you could do is maybe put enough. Where, where the other road was supposed to come out, but now it doesn't because of Orange County? Would that, would it?
Yeah, cause our problem is.
Would be another, another possible entrance on the east side of the project off of fifty?
Our problem is we don't own the land, like, cause there's certain separations that you have to do for connections to, uh, the DOT right away. It's, uh, six sixties for the right in, right out, and then the thirteen twenty, which is past the property is where they'd allow the next connection. That's right where that, um, mobile home community is there.
Yeah.
And so that's, that's where the, where you can put the next connection point, which is not property control.
Right, not yours.
Yeah.
So when the property, or was it the city or Orange County you said acquired the property? It was the store and it took that road away for the drive?
Correct. Yeah, Orange County acquired the properties, these part of their environmental lands program. Like you said, that was already approved by the town to have a commercial center there on that front piece on fifty. So the idea was, at the time, was to make that connection out here to that property to the east that had the commercial up on fifty. But Orange County purchased it, they put it under conservation. Um, they noticed they recently cleaned it up, uh, put up a fence, so it is undeveloped.
So could there not be where that last building is to the east? An exit out of the property at that, at that side too?
No, that would be a substandard, uh, connection. They wanted to where right now there's currently about a hundred feet to the right. They have a current, uh, directional opening at the median, and that's past our property. So they tried to limit, uh, scrunching together, like the connections points along. Say, I forget what kind of classification State Road fifty is, but they only allow a certain number of openings. And actually trying to close openings along fifty, they just did that right there at, uh, Catherine Ross, where before that used to be a full like median opening. And I don't know if you've seen it, where it's like now there's a directional there, which would have been great if there was like a full median open. But you can see how fifty, when the swim school came in, they were like, we're not gonna have a bunch of people going across here. And they closed it down. So it's, it's problems running up that with the state.
Yeah, I just, how many parking spots now versus the original plan that was approved?
We don't have the comparison.
Well, we don't have a comparison. The, the plan before the town, the parking was never counted. It was more of a schematic plan where it's like now we've reduced down the commercial from like one fifty to the specified seventy-three thousand five hundred. And so we're parked at, uh, two spaces per two bedroom, one and a half spaces per one bedroom. And then the commercials parked at about, I think, four point four spaces per thousand.
And what about the entertainment venue?
That's part of the four point four. So it's like entertainment view of venue, it's kind of, we don't know what to call it. It's kind of like a term that's been stuck around since the original. And it's what it is, it's, it's, it's a, um, complex of like food stalls. Like it'll be about five or about seven or ten vendors, like seven vendors. So you can choose who you wanna go to. It's like, do you, does somebody wanna go to a burger place or hamburger place or pizza place or taco? And then having like a central gathering area and like a, a, a bar or drink place for, so it's like, it's kind of like if it was food trucks, but then you're in actual like buildings, kind of like concept. And then like having a concert. Yeah, it's not a concert venue. That's not the intent. It's more of like a community gathering place for eating and having a good time.
Sounds like a great place for kids.
Yeah. We'd love that.
My concern is just the parking, the adjacency of parking. I, I just, it's all skewed to the, where the, the buildings are to the U. There's a lot of parking over there, which is deep into the property. So getting over across, I mean, if there's an event or something busy or the morning, it's just, it, it's gonna be a challenge.
Yeah. Cause we have like, kind of like the desire, cause it's like we want to have it kind of like, uh, with the landscaping, like they will like walk from either the far east side. You can kind of see where we did some breaks in between the, the buildings. And then there's like, kind of like almost a plaza area to get closer to the, the, the event venue, how we call it. So it's, we kind of like want people to kind of like walk through the community there. We do have parking out front of the venue location. But, um, also like the partner that we've been talking to, he's been kind of explaining of like a lot of what he's been seeing a lot more is where people come and they either, they walk or they ride bikes. Or like a lot of what he's seen is also, um, a lot more people like will Uber to like, say like, to a venue to have like a drink and so they don't have to worry about driving back or anything like that. So we do have like incorporated in, can't see it at this level, but on the screen, but we do have like loading areas where it's like an Uber, if you did Uber to it, you could pull into the, they would pull into like the loading zone to drop off safely within the, the development area.
And honestly, they can park real further away.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Sorry, Steve Healy, uh, developer. Um, the, the other thing too that we talked about a lot on the venue side was, and, you know, our partner on that piece of it, he brought up, people will come, they'll park, and ideally it's a big thing for the tenants too, cause that's gonna be a big draw. So they wanna go there, you know, have a drink, eat. If they have to walk a little further to their car, it brings them by the other tenant spaces. So, you know, for him, I thought it was, it was a good idea, architects thought it was a good idea. So having some of that parking kind of pushes people to then have to experience some of the other tenants there that are within the space. So, you know, that, that was something we thought about as well. Cause we wanna have this business to be successful. I mean, that's important, obviously, for the town too.
Yes.
And, you know, and so having, you know, reasons for people to park in and around the, the place is ideal. The other thing we didn't wanna have too is just a big sea of parking. You know, that was a big thing we talked about with the town before. You know, you start, you know, having the buildings kind of moved around a little bit, you end up where you don't just have parking everywhere. And then, you know, Bobby's, I mean, we, we do a lot of commercial stuff. Having four plus spaces per thousand is a significant number of parking spaces for commercial. I mean, most of commercials, three per thousand, and you go, most places are on Orange County. So, I mean, we, we definitely have exceeded the typical commercial center of parking.
Did the size, I, I know the number of units for the multifamily stayed the same. Did the square, overall square footage of multifamily stay the same? Cause it looks bigger now.
It actually went down.
Went down?
Yeah. I can go back from here, but. So we had, uh, we, we reduced, we had.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Bobby. We were, do you think we cut out all the three bedrooms?
Correct, yeah. So we cut out three bedroom units, but we did reduce the overall square footage of the multifamily. So we're doing all one and two bedroom units now. We just, when we did our market studies, we saw that there was definitely a lot more demand for that, especially when you compared it to, even when we're on the corner, you know, three bedrooms were, were sitting. So, um, so we did that and then, you know, we looked at the, you know, the building and kind of optimizing it. We still have amenities and all that stuff in there, but it's, it's, it's actually quite a bit less square footage than we were up before.
What will go in the center of the U? That's just the white space?
Uh, pool, barbecue area, um, you know, hangout space, you know, for residents, a little green space, things like that. It's, it's a pretty good sized area.
So it's amenities.
It's all amenities. It's a hundred percent.
There's no opportunity for more parking there, I think.
No, no, it's a hundred percent. And there's more than enough parking for, for the units that we have back there. So.
So I know when we looked at this last year, this like essentially matched exactly what the town had put in their comprehensive plan, right? Or whatever, master plan?
There was the vision study that the town did. It was actually never formally adopted. It was accepted by the town commission and codified. So what you all, actually what you all saw matched it pretty much exactly. However, when, when to the town commission, the town commission did not necessarily like that layout.
Now, it's gonna be my next question is what drove this, the town commission, right, this change or was it?
So not the architecture change, but, but the change in what they did, ended up approving was different than what you all had saw. Cause what you all saw did pretty much match up exactly with that vision plan. And the big difference was what that vision plan talked about was pretty much all of those buildings would be an excuse to be retail, office, residential in every one of those buildings. Then what the town commission wasn't comfortable with that. And they wanted to move that multifamily back away from fifty. That's why they had the requirement, and they approved it in twenty twenty-four, to move all the multifamily to the southern side of the property, you know, the turnpike, and only put the commercial and office up on fifty. So they did get away from what that vision plan said. But again, that, that vision plan was never codified. It was just an exercise that the town commission approved. So what's happened here is they took still that general concept that the town commission approved with having the multifamily to the back, the commercials to the front, to, to the north, and they've reoriented the buildings, they, they assembled the buildings into the one building. So it does not match that vision plan, but it doesn't have to match that vision plan.
My only, my last, I'm just, it's what you started with, is just the whole thing with the traffic in and out. And as someone who's commissioned traffic studies before, I know the traffic study goes in whoever's paying for the traffic study. So I think that, um, uh, if it was a non-biased traffic study, that there would be some alternatives for entering in and out of this property. And, and I think that's, that's my only heartburn about this is.
Yeah, I, I have, uh, uh, another question regarding this. How, how are you gonna identify to drivers on fifty that the main entrance to this complex is off of Fourth Street? I didn't see any signage there or anything.
There was on the one, the one allocation on the corner, on the corner there was.
It, it said the name of the project, but it didn't, but did it say enter here? I mean, what, how is somebody gonna know that, that the?
Well, they don't have to just enter there. So there's gonna be signs there to obviously direct them there, but there's also signs at the fifty entrance too.
Okay.
So they can come in both ways.
So I, I, I understand the fifty entrance and that's great, but, but the, the Fourth Street entrance is pretty far down.
Can you go back to that corner? It was like the very first rendering?
The renderings, yeah, the renderings.
Right there.
Right there. Okay. So here I am, I'm driving down fifty, right? It says, uh, my project here. Where does it say the main entrance is, is down to, I'm looking at this image, down to the right off of Fourth Street.
We, we have the unidirectional signage yet. We're just building buildings right now.
But you are, you are gonna do something for that, address that issue?
Yeah, we have to, cause it's gonna be four tenants.
Well, yeah. Yeah, like I'm driving by, no, yeah, well, maybe I won't go there, you know, because I can't get in.
It was one of the other things too, is from the, in the RB was, I forget. Cause one of the other things too, you know, talking to the RB was, we realized like on the building facades, you know, we didn't show the signage for tenants, right?
So there is, there is gonna be signage on the side that faces.
Correct. Yeah. So there's, cause they're gonna want it. So I'm building signage there. Uh, there'll be signage, you know, for all the tenants on that side of the building that faces that. There'll be additional, obviously signage, you know, the venue will have a brand. So we haven't gotten to that yet. I mean, this we could absolutely, you know, have, you know, this will be not what you see here, which is whatever the name of the shopping center is. You probably have that plus, you know, some directional along with, you know, tenant information also. Just like we'll have tenant information, which isn't shown here on the fifty entrance too.
Okay. All right. So you're gonna have tenant names and stuff like a, like an address board?
Hundred percent. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. We wanna give them as, as much as the town obviously allows some signage, but we wanna give them as much exposure as we can.
Okay. Because the, the town signage is, um, is limited. We had that discussion on the exchange.
Yeah. That's what I mean. It would be as much as we can, we can obviously provide.
And the difference with this one, the exchange wasn't on fifty. Your code has a larger allocation of signage for properties on State Road fifty. So.
Okay. All right.
Did you have any?
No, I don't.
Any other questions?
No, thanks.
So this is a public hearing. If there's anyone present who would like to speak on this item? You can state your name and your address, please.
Uh, my name is Kimberly Parsons, two eighty-four South Fourth Street, which is, project is right in front of my house. My concern is, which you've already touched on, is the traffic. Because if I'm looking at this one rendering right here, you've got the driveways coming in and out right in front of our house, both of our driveways. Okay, we already have fifteen houses across the bridge, and each house has at least two to three cars, if I'm right. Cause most of those kids are all adults now, except for a few of them, except for the one house that just been built last year. Okay, so traffic right now is not too bad. Traffic is gonna increase because we are increasing a hundred and ninety homes times three people at least per home. And then you're gonna all have them come out on Fourth Streets in front of our house?
They can come out fifty too.
Yeah, but you put the driveway right in front of our house. Have you not seen where you put the driveways on this piece, on this, this one here, the blue red is right here?
Blue one, okay, first.
I'm just asking for some compromise. You know, my house, the center of my, the center of our driveway is four hundred feet. Okay? And then the other hundred feet is on the other side of Orange County. Well, I mean, if you guys go down the road, you'll see where I'm talking about. Cause I have two entrances. One is my main entrance that goes to the back of the property, and then the other is my house. If I have to sit for twenty minutes to get to my house, it was a problem. Okay. I mean, come on. If, if, if you stop and think that you put, let's say you all living on a suburb like we are, and there was a busy development, wouldn't you kind of ask for compromise where the driveway you're gonna go? I mean, you guys asked for our public opinion, and I'm giving my public opinion with, with compromise here. You know, you all look at me like I'm stupid and this is the way it's gonna be, but come on. I have kids that are on this road. My, my grandkids, I have babies, two, two grandkids, a four-year-old and a four-month-old right now. You know, and pretty soon, you know, I mean, I'm teaching my daughter, my grandkids how to stay off of the road. But if you add, you're adding, how many cars? grandkids how to stay off of the road. But if you add, you're adding, how many cars you're adding that's gonna be accessing that road, just to get in and out, to the, to the complex itself, to the, the, to whatever offices you put up front here, or whatever venue, music, entertainment. You know, I'm just asking for a little compromising here. I, I know the project's gonna go in regardless, but we've gotta have a little bit of compromising. I mean, I live, like I said, I live four hundred feet off the highway. Eventually, somebody's gonna build on that piece right beside me.
Alright, yeah, appreciate your comments. Thank you.
I don't know, just a key on this.
Any other comments from?
Uh, if I may, for the board makes its decision here, I'd like to speak a little bit on the traffic issue. Uh, under Florida law, traffic concurrency ensures that public road facilities are adequate to handle traffic from new development. However, concurrency is a management tool and not a basis for denial. Municipalities cannot reject a rezoning or development application solely because of anticipated traffic impacts. Instead, if the development causes or contributes to a deficiency in roadway capacity, the local government's role is to require mitigation consistent with a traffic study. This usually means that the, the developer must fund or construct roadway improvements, or contribute proportionally to impact fees, but it does not provide a basis for denial.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, just to add to what Ms. Beal said, there was a traffic study done for this project back in twenty twenty-four. It was reviewed by the town's own traffic engineer, CPH. So it was not, you know, just accepted as is. It was reviewed and also approved by the town's traffic engineer. What I, what's important was the analysis that was done back last year was actually for a much more intensive project. It actually was based on the hundred and ninety multifamily units, which is the same, but it also included a hundred and ten hotel rooms, and then it has twenty-five thousand square feet of office and a hundred and twenty-five thousand square feet of shopping center. So a hundred and fifty thousand square feet of shopping center of commercial. So, as Ms. Beal stated, we have the traffic study that was done, was accepted, that does show that it doesn't meet what's called the, the requirements for turn lanes or any of those improvements. As, as Mr. Johnson stated, they are going to have to improve that portion of fourth that goes from the driveway up to State Road fifty, where they would be impacting with their traffic. So they would be doing that. Um, but you do have in the record for this project, the traffic study that was done, that does show that it doesn't require any additional mitigation beyond that Fourth Street.
Yeah, and, and I know, I know disregard that, uh, the changes are not positive, 'cause we already have the hotel rooms now. I think the biggest change is just, we're going from four entry and exit points. There used to be two along Fourth and two along fifty, if you consider the side road off of fifty. Now you're only having, you know, basically you have one, one major point in and, or two in and outs from four. You're cutting. So was the traffic study modified to, to go from the four egress points to two, down to two? Would, would the traffic study not have to be modified to, for the new, for the new layout?
Well, the traffic study showed it just had a distribution of trips out to fifty and out to Fourth Street. It didn't actually line up with driveways. It just had, okay, this percentage is coming out to the west, this percentage of the trips are going out to the north. So there would not necessarily need to be a revision. Um, and also it's a significant reduction in, in terms of the amount of trips that was evaluated last year, for basically half the commercial development, than what was analyzed last year with the traffic study. So there is, you know, ba- based on traffic analysis, and, and what I would have to say as your planner, is a reduction in traffic impacts. Now, how it goes onto the road is the separate question.
That's the, right.
Right, separate question. But it does, it is a reduction in traffic impact.
Alright, uh, any other comments from up here? No? Alright, somebody wanna take the motion on this one?
Alright, um, for the amended development agreement for the project in the Fourth Street Village Plan Development, uh, this amended agreement, I propose that we accept it as written and shown here tonight.
Are you talking just on the development agreement, or the whole package?
Well, it was maybe better than the whole.
Yeah, is that, is that a motion?
Stephanie, am I making the wrong motion?
I would ask that you make a separate motion to, I would ask that you make a separate motion to approve the preliminary subdivision plan, but that is sufficient for the development agreement.
For this part, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so.
Okay, so, so let's do that first.
Second. Colin Baker?
Aye.
I am that part. Alright.
Okay, second motion to, uh, accept the first amendment to the development agreement, the preliminary subdivision plan for this project as presented tonight.
Sorry, I second it. Could we put conditions on it, or?
You can, you can, um, recommend approval with certain conditions.
With certain conditions? I mean, I just would like that the traffic study be, or the egress points be reconsidered, because I don't, I, I think two egress points is not enough for this. I think they need to come back with a better plan, or with the traffic study, or especially that the two egress points and where the driveways are located are adequate.
Okay, well, then nothing would be wrong with that motion. And Stephanie, how do we, how do we do that?
Well, I will note that you have just recommended approval of the development agreement. Um, you, you can recommend approval of the preliminary subdivision plan without additional recommendation, um, permission, rather.
We could just modify the recommendation and vote on the modify, or if they're in agreement?
Do you need to modify the motion?
Modify the motion with the recommendation that they relook at the traffic, the egress in the traffic study.
Yes.
Well, he just went through the last motion, so we need a new motion.
Okay, yes, fire.
Yes, so we, we have to have to do it for you. Okay, well, can I speak for a second?
I apologize. I think we closed, right? So, yeah, I'm sorry. Or can we reopen?
I will allow the applicant to.
Okay, alright, I'll allow you to speak, sir.
Good, I, I just wanna provide some clarifications about access points, 'cause we are limited by the state of Florida on what we can do off of fifty. So what we are shown, we can't do anything more than what is currently shown along fifty. Now, speaking towards what some of the concerns that were raised along, um, Fourth Street. So we are, our location of our proposed driveway that we have is restricted by our setback from, we have to be setback sufficiently from State Road fifty. Right now, we're showing two hundred and eighty feet back from State Road fifty. That allows for stacking of traffic to come, so it's like you won't, so our intersection won't conflict with people coming in and backing up against that traffic. And then our other restriction that we have is as you go south, you start coming up on the, the overpass. So you're restricted from being able to put a driveway farther south. So right now, where we have our proposed access point on Fourth Street, that's right where we can have our one access off of Fourth Street.
So the previous plan was not doable, with that being two on Fourth Street?
Yeah, there was, that one farther to the south, there was a grade restriction. It was coming up to, uh, up to that overpass, so we couldn't fit that one in. The traffic study that we have is, it's showing at the level of services on, say, Fourth Street and fifty is what it was kind of analyzing, not so much, uh, traffic at, uh, certain driveways. So based on that analysis, we're ma- keeping the level of service consistent on Fourth Street and fifty, I think is what that traffic study was saying.
Thank you. It's tough, because I, I mean, we're hearing his side of the story, not saying you're incorrect or anything like that, but it, I still would like something that, you know, has a consideration for the egress points to be reconsidered, if at all possible. I don't know what avenue we have through further reviews and that.
No, you can make that as a recommendation with your motion. I would report that to the town commission. That is your recommendation. Yeah, get aware of your, your concern, and they can be ready to address it with the town commission with that.
That would be my recommendation. I'm, I'm not speaking for you both, but I mean, I'm just taking a second.
I, I agree.
So, so do we have a?
Okay, let me try again.
A new motion?
I make the motion regarding Fourth Street Village Plan Development Amendment, First Amendment to the Development Agreement, the Preliminary Subdivision Plan, that we recommend that it be considered with the provision that an additional access point into the project be made somehow.
Be considered? Me, me, yeah, okay.
Well, it's our, it's our recommendation, right? And then it's up to the town commission to say a or n, to say the approval.
A second?
Yeah, one second, alright.
Colin Baker?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Alright, this meeting is adjourned at seven fifty-three P M. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Recording stopped.